Good evening, and I want to welcome everybody. First of all, I'm really excited to see this many folks attending. This is great, nothing like community involvement. This is our July ninth, twenty twenty four Select Board meeting. And our first item on the agenda is pub- public comment. This is, you're allowed to say anything you wish that is not on the agenda. And there is a time limit of two minutes. Is there any public comment?
I'd like to make a two-minute little speech. So, this week, we, the Police Department, Fire Department, and Highway Department responded. We posted it on our social media that there was going to be a controlled explosion over this past week. What had happened was that some people were cleaning out some of their property, and they found leftover deckboard. And so, that needed to be disposed of properly. I just wanted to take a few minutes. I sent Brian Toronto, who's the crew chief of the Stowe Highway Department. He actually came in at the request of the State Police to, they wanted a dump truck filled with sand. They, he drove it over to the scene. They took a shovel, they dug some of it out. They put the explosives inside of the dump truck, covered it back up, and he drove it back to the Highway Department where they did a controlled explosion. That goes well beyond what Brian's job description is. So, I just wanted to take a few minutes and let the board know, listen, Brian did an excellent job. We wanted to recognize him at the Police Department and say, listen, you did it. You went well above and beyond what was required of you, and he did it without question. And I just thought everybody should know what an amazing job he did. So, that's what I said. And I just want, if you find something in your house that you think is explosive, just leave it there also. Call us, call nine-one-one. You don't need to bring it to the Fire Academy. Police station or the fire station, or the town hall or anything, just call nine-one-one. We'll come and take care of it free of charge, it's okay. But I just wanted the board to know what an amazing job he did and that we recognized him for that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Comments? Let's see any online, let's see any hands raised. Okay, moving along. Board member updates. I have one, but does anybody have updates from last month at all?
Comprehensive plan is moving along. We're getting into the vision phase after having reviewed most of the input from the town. And we're starting to work on our vision statement. We're hoping by the end of the next month, I believe, we're going to be producing the vision statement. It looks along all the pre-work, where everyone to see. We'll see where we're going from there.
That's awesome. Courtney, do you have any updates on any of your committees or anything? Okay.
Smart might meet. Probably, we postponed a meeting tomorrow to the next week, so.
Can you speak up?
Okay.
Yeah, the Affordable Housing Trust meeting is postponed until the next week.
Okay. My update is with the Town Hall Reuse Committee. We did meet for the second, for the second time last evening. And we are tasked ourselves with our first rendition of a survey for our next meeting next month. And then, also, kind of an educational PR statement as well, which Denise has also graciously offered our PR experts to take a look at as well. So, that's what's going on with the Town Hall reuse at this point.
Great, cool.
Town Administrator's report.
Thank you. Just a reminder that tomorrow is the groundbreaking ceremony for the library project. It will be on Common Road at five PM at the end of the construct, or at the beginning of the construction gates. So, folks can park at First Parish Church. I got permission from the church that we can use their lot. Also, town building the former fire station, and there will be some parking along Common Road. So, folks, we expect it to be a short ceremony, but we are planning a formal ceremony for that. The Climate Resilience Master Plan for the Stowe Acres North Course has been finalized and is posted on our website. For those looking for a more interactive version, you can view the interactive story map about the plan. It's really cool, you can actually change to see what things are going to look like. The images show you about the invasive species and animals that are on the property. It's a very thorough report. We are very pleased at the final product. And I cannot thank the internal team enough for the amount of work and effort that went into this project over the last year, and quite frankly, the amount of work that took place the last two weeks to get everything finalized. So, just great job by everybody here that worked on it. And I hope the residents read it and actually learn a lot about the property and what the plans are over the next twenty to thirty years. I would like to piggyback on Mike's comments and acknowledge the efforts of our public safety folks, both Police and Fire and Brian Toronto, for their work on Saturday with the explosive components. Obviously, every call, they're not sure of, and they put their, you know, lives at risk. And certainly when there are explosives at play. And to Mike's point, Brian was obviously exceptional coming in and doing what he did and actually traveling with these devices or these components. So, I just want to thank everybody for their work with that. And lastly, the Rediscover Mapledale folks are holding the first annual Robert H. Hawkins Golf Tournament on Monday, August twenty-sixth at Stowe Acres. Anyone participating in the golf tournament or just wants to participate in the lunch can search for the Rediscover Mapledale website, or they can find the link on our website. So, I encourage folks to participate, take advantage, see what the Rediscover Mapledale folks have put together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Our next item is the appointments. First is Sunny Richardson. Sunny here or?
She is on Zoom.
On Zoom. Hi, Sunny.
Hi. Nice to see you.
Nice to see you. I see we have a letter of recommendation from Denise as well. Sunny, is there anything you would like to say?
Um, I just wanted to thank you for considering me to appoint me to this position. I'm already a Randall Library trustee, and I'm on the Randall Library two-point-O committee. And I just want to take this opportunity to continue to make a positive impact on our town. And unfortunately, I'll have to log off right after this because about thirty-five minutes ago, a tornado ripped through my hometown.
Oh, gosh.
I need to continue on everybody. So, my apologies for having to leave early.
No, it's quite understandable.
You ready for motion, Lynn?
Yes.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to appoint Sunny Richardson to the Stowe Cultural Council for the remainder of a three-year term ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let it show to unanimous. I hope everything goes well, Sunny.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you for all your efforts on behalf of the town. Okay. The appointment to the EDIC.
So, we do not have an appointment this evening for that.
Okay, so we'll move no action on that. Okay, so discussion and possible votes. First item, warrant for the September primary election. Linda, you're up.
Yes, this is the standard procedure. The secretary sends out the warrant, the secretary's office sends out the warrants, and the Select Board has to sign off. And this is for the primary on September third, day after Labor Day. Polls are open seven AM to eight PM at the Center School. And there's a lot of information on the website. You can see our ballots for Stowe, and we should be getting our ballots to get ready to mail out in the next couple of weeks.
Great.
Yeah, there's contested race on the Democrat side for the Governor's Council and a contested race in the Republican for Senate, for Congress, US Senate. So, those are the only two contested races. There's plenty of rooms for write-ins.
Okay. Questions?
Nope. Ready for motion?
Sure am.
All right. Mr. Chair, I move to approve and sign the warrant for the September primary election as presented by the town clerk.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let it record show it's unanimous. Thank you. Okay, special event permit for the National Police Night Out for Tuesday, August sixth, at the Stowe Center Park. And it's Phoenix Dwyer.
Yes, that's correct.
Hi, Phoenix.
Hi, how are you?
I'm stellar, how are you doing?
Good.
Okay. If you'd like to give us a brief explanation, that'd be wonderful.
Sure, of course. So, National Night Out is obviously a national event. At the time, we submitted the letter, there were fifty-four communities already signed up in Massachusetts to take part in the event. Vision for the community engagement team for Stowe's National Night Out involves two different food trucks. One would be an ice cream truck, and one is actually the food truck that will be doing the Employee Appreciation Day as well. Additionally, we're going to have yard games, a dunk tank, potato sack races, things like that. Hopefully, if the permit's approved, throughout Town Center Park. And we're just hoping that residents, families can come out and just get to know various members of the Police Department, everything from dispatchers to officers to sergeants to admin staff, so they're more comfortable knowing who's responding to their homes and taking their calls of distress.
Oh, great. Can I get a motion, please?
Mr. Chair, I move to grant a permit for National Police Night Out on Tuesday, August sixth, twenty twenty-four, from five-thirty PM to eight-thirty PM at Town Center Park.
Second? Any discussion or questions from anybody? Who's going to be in the dunk tank, that's what I want to know.
So, we have two possible candidates right now. I don't want to give away any surprises, but if you show up, I'm sure you'll find out.
There we go.
Not that that was a plug or anything, but.
Okay.
So, the kickball's going to be next to the pond?
So, yes, that's what we're thinking. So, that way, when they kick it, it's away from the pond, so, yeah. Yeah, no, not towards the pond, no, 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 no.
That's fine, there's going to be a lot of public safety there.
We're not going to have any dive marks or, no, 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 no. That's a separate event.
Actually, we're going to have you rant the waters when the ball goes in.
Okay, any further comments? All those in favor? Aye. Aye. But the record shows unanimous. Very good. And we're really looking forward to that.
Thank you, sorry.
And I think it's really valuable for the town. Our next is the special event permit, one-day liquor license. An entertainment license, ask?
Nope, you skipped one, the Bike for the Woods.
Oh, I'm sorry. The Stowe Bike for the Woods, Sunday, August eleventh. Event manager Jim Salby for the Stowe Conservation Trust.
He's up on that.
He's on Zoom.
Hi, Jim.
How are you? How's everybody?
Excellent, how are you?
Good. Do you want me to summarize?
Yeah, a brief summary would be great.
Sure. The Stowe Bike for the Woods is an annual event, you've seen this before. It's a charity bike ride benefiting the Stowe Conservation Trust. This year, it's occurring on August eleventh, starting at Center School, the Harley Road entrance. It's the same place where it was last year. The event fees are twenty-five dollars for adults, fifteen dollars for children, and fifty dollars for family top-out, no more than fifty dollars. What's particularly notable about the Bike for the Woods is that it has several distances ranging from five miles, fourteen miles, thirty-seven miles, which can also easily be turned into twenty-five or sixty-four. So, if you want to take a little Sunday bike ride with the kids and benefit the Stowe Conservation Trust, it's a perfect opportunity. If you want to get in a really serious ride, and I'm telling you, that sixty-four ride, a sixty-four mile ride is hilly too. You can do that too. You have my event application. We will have food at two locations, the start and a rest stop. I've been in touch with the Board of Health. They don't have any concerns, it's all prepackaged or pre-made food. The Police Department has reviewed the route, and they can speak for themselves, but I don't think they have any concerns. And I would be happy to answer any questions.
Questions from you? I'll take a motion.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to grant a permit for the Bike for the Woods for Sunday, August eleventh, twenty twenty-four, from nine AM to three PM, with setup starting at seven AM, pending receipt of certificate of insurance when it is available.
A resounding second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 The record shows unanimous. Now.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
And now the special event permit, one-day liquor license and entertainment license, Assabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival for Saturday, August thirty-first. Event manager Scott Feld.
Feldy.
Feldy's, and thank you.
Right here.
The First Parish Church. Since this one is an actual license involved, let's take the motion first.
Uh, well, so do you, there's three motions here on it? Do you, how do you want to proceed on that? Happy to do whatever you want, just.
So, it's three different parts to it.
I know, he wants to take it before.
There are three different parts, yes. Let's take just the one-day liquor license, which is the second.
Sure.
Let's move that first.
Um, okay. Mr. Chair, I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Assabet Craft Beer. I'm sorry, I don't mean to, you should really do the special event permit first because they won't need a one-day liquor license if you don't approve the special event permit.
Good call.
So, I would recommend you start with the events and then move your way down. All right, Mr. Chair, I move to.
Putting the cart before the horse.
Yep. Mr. Chair, I move to approve a special event permit for the Assabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to be held at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, from twelve noon until four PM, pending receipt of all requirements.
Second?
Okay.
Do I need to recuse myself? No, okay.
No, you're not getting any financial benefit from this, are you?
No, no financial benefit. I'll be making, walking a lot of steps that day.
Oh, geez, you know, you're blocking soccer balls.
Yeah. All sorts of involvement.
Seriously, any comments from anyone?
Mm-mm, no, this is great.
Nope.
I remember the first time we granted this permit.
Some years ago, yeah.
It has evolved, and I think this is great, the third one, yeah. I would, perhaps they want to advertise their event a little bit before you vote.
So, this is our third annual fundraiser for the First Parish Church of Stowe, Acton. And there will be five different food trucks, four different brewers, there will be a band, there'll be a large game section for kids. Good time had for all, twelve to four. Be well advertised very shortly. Be posters and flyers coming out.
Yard signs the law, yeah.
So.
I would just add to that that over three years, because the first one took a number of years to get through because of COVID. But over those three years, between the three of us, truth be told, none of us live in Stowe. But between the three of us and then people that came on onboard, we have made and increased the safety and the enjoyability of the event. And I think it's just, I mean, it's just become, I feel it's become a part of the, you know, when they do the history of Stowe, it'll be before the festivals happen. And it's been with the cooperation, especially with the chiefs, with the Fire Department.
Absolutely, yeah.
Safety, you know, it's just, it's just a kind of wonderful thing to watch.
Great. Before I ask for the vote.
Actually, I have a question. I am one of the art exhibits at this festival. Would you like me to recuse myself?
Are you selling? Are you selling?
I would hope so.
Right, and you're actually paying to do this as well, so, yes, yeah.
I mean, you could to be safe, I don't think you need to. But you certainly could recuse yourself if you're comfortable doing so, if you're more comfortable doing so.
Well, I've disclosed it.
Yeah, and this is the first time we've done something. So, each year, we try and add something a little bit different. So, we've got the, a number of art vendors coming, so it's great.
And what's happened, for instance, the first year, the kids area was just sort of an afterthought, and now it's a main event that happens there. So, with the art, that could be as well going forward.
And the only question that I have since I have both chiefs sitting in front of me. Do you have?
That's why I felt the eat mine.
Do you have any?
So, we've been working for three years on the same plan, developing it, working not only with the fire chief, myself, the building commissioner as well too, to make sure all contingency plans are in place. Not only the spaces between the food trucks, there are certain requirements. We also put in place that everyone has to be tip certified. We also have put in place that the liquor, the farms have to be, who are selling, the brewers have to be properly licensed. We do all those checks too. If it goes inside, we have a contingency plan for what happens if everything goes inside, the amount of people, everybody who is working, it has to be crowd managers. So, we've been working on this, it's ever been evolving as they keep talking about that they add more stuff. So, we add our concerns, and we address those, and they've addressed them. There is a pre-walkthrough, right?
Yes.
Yeah, there is a pre-walkthrough between because the fire has a certain requirements, the building department has their requirements. So, before this event, there is a pre-event walkthrough. We actually require them to have a police officer on scene as well. And so, we feel really confident that our concerns have been met. And we've been, you know, we're looking forward to it, it was a success last year. And we expect the same for them for this year.
We do have to, you know, convey that we're very pleased with how they are pre-planning the whole event, making sure that all the needs are met. They've even gone as far as having first aid stations to help the public. They've also addressed the Common Road being closed due to the library project and making sure that the public can get into their facility without endangerment. So, really have to commend them on their planning and their, you know, pre-planning of it.
Great. Any other comments or questions?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show it's unanimous. Now move on to our one-day liquor license.
You ready?
I'm ready.
Great, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Assabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to serve beer from three breweries in a delineated area at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, from twelve noon until four PM, pending receipt of all requirements.
Second?
Discussion.
I was thinking there might be a recommendation to extend the liquor license till five PM so that volunteers who are helping to clean up can also enjoy some liquor. Even the original plan. Even though we're closing at the, the event is closing at four to the public, any other volunteers would like to?
Yeah, it's a good point. There are a bunch of us volunteers that pretty much are there for the entire four hours.
The ideal, but.
Yes, yeah.
I have a point of order. Did I hear you say four brewers?
Yeah, that's what I was getting, I was getting there, I know, it's, I was getting there, yeah.
No, that, that's all right, I was listening.
Yeah.
I was listening.
Very good.
Listen, man, I just, I'm reading what's on screen.
No, 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 that's.
But I did, but I did hear it, so, yes.
So, in actuality, for clarification.
And did you say four or five? You said four, okay.
Okay.
So, we need to do.
I, do you want me to reread it as amended, or?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
Okay, Mr. Chair, I move to approve a one-day liquor license for the Assabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to serve beer from four breweries in a delineated area at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, from twelve noon until five PM, pending receipt of all requirements.
Second?
Now discussion on the amendment. Is there any questions or concerns?
I'd like to find out with the town administrator if that change is okay.
Um, I, I'm trying to find that, so it's pending all receipt of everything. So, I think we'll be fine, and I'll just make sure we have the documentation on four versus three, so.
And from twelve to five versus twelve to four for the?
We changed. Oh, you changed that in the motion? We changed it to five in the motion, yeah. Yeah, I don't have a problem with the time, that's not an issue.
Okay. Any? Okay, I will take a vote. All those in favor of the amended licensure from three to four breweries and instead of four PM, five PM, pending the receipt of all requirements.
Aye?
Aye.
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 Let the record show it is unanimous.
One more motion?
You betcha.
All right, Mr. Chair, I move to approve an entertainment permit for the Assabet Craft Beer and Food Truck Festival to be held at First Parish Church on Saturday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, from twelve noon until four PM.
Second?
Discussion. Take a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Let the record show it's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Now I'll be there.
I'll be there.
Okay, that's good.
See it on?
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Go up to Cory.
Yes, please.
Smart, all your preparations.
Yes.
It's two pages, so it's probably both.
Okay, next up on our agenda is the.
And you sent in your license, right, we have that.
Yeah, you emailed me, I.
Yeah, I think Joy sent it to you, you're good, thank you.
Pine Bluff Recreation Area Discussion. And there will be public comment allowed. So, I think the way I want to do this is to allow the public to come forward and make their comments. I asked that they be brief. We have received written letters and notifications from individuals who would like to speak.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair, do you want to give any background on this for anybody that doesn't know where the specific topic is?
Um, I figured that would be coming up in the public comment from the individual that's bringing it forward.
Hi, my name's Frank Beas, three ten Sudbury Road. My wife and I submitted the letters. Essentially, our position is, is that per the rules of Pine Bluff, some of these rules are not being followed through on. And because of that, we're having trespassing on my property. This past weekend, we were gone for the Fourth of July. We came home, we had to call the police on Monday. Somebody was in my pool, moved my pool cover back, went through two of my boats. You know, they've been in my neighbor's driveway, you know. We're just kind of had, you know, had enough of this, you know. We really like the facility, we've been there quite a long time. It's really since COVID this kind of started, and, you know, people figured out about it. And now it's kind of, you know, it seems to me what happens is, is that, you know, the rec department's great, the staff's great, they leave, the gate stays open. And, you know, people come in there afterwards, and that seems to be, that seems to be the catalyst for a lot of the issues down there, at least from what I can observe. And, you know, the rec department's own rules clearly state that if they don't have staff to man the gate, the gate's to be locked. Now, I'm not trying to like kick people out of the public park, I'm not trying to be that person. But if we have people in there that are taking advantage of a situation and then trespassing on people's property, et cetera, I have a problem with that, you know. You know, we've had people in my windows, we've had people, you know, delivering food to my house. Like, you know, I, I come home on Monday, what if somebody drowned in my pool? You know, now I'm liable for that, you know. It's just really disconcerting and uncomfortable, you know. I know that, you know, the Police Department's own records, I looked through them this weekend, they were down there three times, they had a disturbance down there on Sunday involving drinking and alcohol. I don't know if those were residents or not. I don't know how many beach passes we've sold as to how many cars are in the parking lot over there. There's a way to cross-reference that. You know, if we've sold twenty beach passes and there's twenty-eight cars, twenty-eight cars one day, twenty-three another day, you know, who are these other people, you know? So, you know, we have, you know, we have Camp Stowe in there, we allow people. You know, so, you know, we have, you know, we have Camp Stowe in there, and we allow people in there randomly throughout the daytime, like you know, we have a situation where it's like a kind of a wooded, quiet area over there, everybody does a good job, I'm not trying to blame the police or the wreck department or anybody. They're just kind of out of sight, out of mind, and, you know, they're, they're in there for sure. Um, but, you know, this, this is turning into an uncomfortable situation now, and I've, you know, I'm kind of at wit's end. I talked, I'll tell you right now, I talked to an attorney, uh, about what my legal rights are about this, and I don't wanna go that route but if we're not gonna enforce these rules, then I don't really see what choice I'm gonna have, other than to move forward with trying to secure my own property, like you know, this is, this is who's coming over, this is when it's occurring, it's primarily on the weekends and at night, and, you know, I've, I've had enough. I've just absolutely had enough about it, so, that's my public comment. I want the town to enforce its regulations. I don't think that's very, very, you know, too hard to ask. And one thing I would like to add, if that's alright, you know, a couple of years ago, we were, I, I had volunteered to close that gate. Everything was, you know, everything seemed to be fine, and Chief, please correct me if I'm wrong, that seemed to abate a lot of the problems. Uh, the wreck department was great after that, the following year, they had a, a gate checker which is pretty much in line with most other communities around here in Town Beaches, cuz I checked. Um, it's in line with the Cape and every other place, including Harvard, um, people, you know beach you at the gate essentially, that's where the gate checker is, and if you don't have a beach pass, or you're in, you know, whatever, then they turned you away. And that seemed to abate the problem, now they have moved the beach checker back over to the other side of the facility, which allows people access to the facility, they wait till they leave and then, you know, they do whatever they want, and then at nine o'clock at night, or later.
Okay.
Sorry, I was killed.
With concerns that that have been addressed, uh, is the wreck department
Yes, Laura's on.
Here. For comment.
Hello.
Hi Laura.
Right here.
Okay.
Hi, how are you?
Okay, um, with the issue at hand, your comments would be appreciated.
Sure, um, I can't really address anything that's happening on his property, that's something he should address with the police. Um, as far as uh Pine Bluffs, you know, we did install a gate that the police can attest that that definitely, definitely has um lowered the amount of people um on the property after hours but it's not the only place that people can get into the beach, they can get into the beach on Kingland, they can get into the beach by boat they can get into the beach all different ways, so, um, you know, again, when it's off hours that's not the responsibility necessarily of the wreck department to make sure that, um, the place is empty, we have a we're open from, you know, nine in the morning to doing activities until seven o'clock at night the gates open from six in the morning till nine P M at night, um, we have, you know when we have crazy storms, sometimes the gate, um, needs to be reset after a outage you know, we, as soon as we are aware of it, we lock the gate. Um, we have a maintenance person now, and he said in the last three weeks, he's only picked up two beer bottles and two nips um, and threw those away, where he's not seeing the increasingly partying outback, um, you know, we are watching it. Uh, as far as our policy, we, we do allow non-residents for parties if they have a season pass. Um, we have to do that, we use C P C funds, C B A funds, in order to do the new buildings. So, but we also were aware that we have an increasing number of people coming in, so we had to limit in some way and it is our right to, to do that, um, so we do, but we do have parties, we do have events. Um, Mr. Bemis could look on our calendar and see what's going on if you'd like to, and know when it's gonna be increased time where there'll be more people there than other days. Um, we, we are a public park, so we do allow people to come in on our, when we have summer camp. Um, we have policies and procedures in place to, um, make sure our staff and our campers are safe. Um, yes, uh, I'm willing to answer any questions, I think, um, Chief Solis will have, um, comments to make as well but on my end, we're not seeing increased damage, we're not seeing vandalism, we're not seeing needles, we're not seeing paraphernalia around, um you know, I'm sure there's activity after hours, but I'm not aware of it and I, usually the police will call if something is, um, at the level that I need to be aware.
Okay, thank you, uh, Chief Solis.
So, we've been, we've been in conversations with Frank for a couple of years now on what we can do to, to minimize uh things that are happening at his house. I was not aware of what, did you report the whole thing?
I did.
So who came down?
Uh, I don't remember the, uh, Sergeant Nelson.
Okay, so we'll, uh, I'll, I'll talk with him about that, but I wasn't aware of this past weekend, stop, I swear I cannot talk to that.
Yep.
Um, I know that a few years ago, that it was a, an issue, a more of an issue that, uh, food was being delivered at your house.
Uh-huh.
I know that at the time, the old, old, uh, the other, uh, admin for the select board office reached out uh, and had an address added to Google Maps, and so like Grubhub and all those, uh, food delivery apps could make delivery to, um, the Town Beach rather than to your house.
Uh-huh.
Um, the other part, what's that?
I appreciate that.
The other, uh, things that we have, uh, been doing is, uh, I know that you put in your letter about the needle that was found, I have, uh, Jason here um, who actually went down and recovered it, uh, that, that needle, which we found later to be a diabetic needle, right?
Same needle they used for some drugs.
Um, but not kept in the same manner. The other, uh, we've increased our patrols since May first, we've, uh, we've been down at that, at the Town Beach doing checks um, a hundred and, I believe it's a hundred and twenty-five times in the past seventy days. Um, Sergeant, um, sorry, Sergeant Scott has been, uh, putting down how many vehicles every time she goes down there and it's usually between like seventeen and twenty-three, twenty-four cars. Um, we have enforced in the past, uh, the no trespassing after dark, and that is a half hour after sunset. So every day, sunset's different, so that's how we have to, you know, every day in the summertime, it gets later and later. So, the timeframe that it stays open is later and later. Now, we have the gate in place, which, um, so when that is closed, it is curbing the amount of people that are going in there.
Because, after hours, yeah.
After hours, after nine o'clock.
Uh-huh.
So, we are, um, trying to do our due diligence one, and try to increase, uh, our availability, not only our availability, but our presence. Uh, however, we are not going to go through, um, and start asking people for IDs uh, where, where they're, they're reside, what residence they're from, what town they're from, um, we're not gonna do that. We don't have the authority to, to just randomly ask people for IDs and ask them where they're from, it's highly illegal. Um, and also, if, uh, even if we drive through, uh, a parking lot, if we have, don't have a criminal justice reason to run their plate, then we can't. So, you know, for me to look and say, hey, that, that car is not, you know, it's not from Stowe, I'm not gonna go look for that person, it's not gonna happen. And I believe one of the rules, uh, is that you can be a guest of a, of a resident and go there, so you know, who's to say that one car is not a guest of another car? And so I, I feel, and I'm not gonna have the officers go down and start questioning people on where they live and who they are, that's, that's true.
Uh, no, I'm not advocating for that, what I'm advocating for is a beach placard, like most people have. Some type of a parking pass that delineates used being allowed into that facility, if you're a guest, that's, that's fine.
Well, in actuality, because C P A funds were used, it's open to the general public, um, and so, um we, we legally cannot do that, you cannot legally restrict that kind of access unless it reaches a certain number, from my understanding of the law. Uh, you can't have a thousand cars, in other words.
I'll, like, have a minute, if I could, yeah, I just wanted to add that, um, we do have a beach checker and it's a beach checker, it's not a park checker, we allow any, we allow people to come in and use the playground to walk their dogs in the back area, to go fishing, uh, to put their kayaks in occasionally, different things like that, so but the checker is there to check and make sure that nobody's going beyond without knowing what they're doing beyond that area. We used to have it up the top just to tell people that they couldn't be there, that, at the end of the road and we were told by the police many times over the years, um, that it's just unsafe to have a kid along the roadside, male or female that could be easily grabbed, there's one person there, that's it, with money, it would just, it's a safety issue, we're not gonna do that.
Okay. And also on top of that, like, when you have the car start lying out, if you have someone at that entrance gate and there's like six, seven cars, now you have those cars stopped all along Subri Road, so.
Good.
Alright, I think at this point, I wanna just close it off to the board at this point, any comments from the board or anything?
Thanks for bringing all of it to our attention.
Anything else we can do?
Maybe that's probably a good, that Frank can go and do that.
And you'd either report it to the proper
I'm sorry, you guys really need to speak up, you're all sort of mumbling a little.
Yeah.
I just feel for the Bemises, they've got, they go away for a weekend, come back and find somebody in their pool that's
I have an eleven-year-old daughter and I have people sticking their faces in my windows. I don't understand why a year ago they could ask, and they could sit there, but now they can't? I don't understand that at all, can somebody explain the rationale of that to me? Why is it a year ago they were allowed to sit there and check people, and they were turning people away, and now they're not doing it?
At the gate?
Yeah.
Um, I, well, that was answered, and I have, we're actually close comment at this point, so, this is amongst the board now.
They had three people sitting there, yeah.
Yeah.
And I would ask that respectfully, that be, uh, respect it, um. I understand what you're saying, as far as the resident is concerned, um you know, I mean, the appropriate thing that you do is you report it to the proper authorities. Um, and it sounds like if a report comes in to the police department, or the wreck department actually um, there's been a response.
I would, I, are you, are you asking me?
Yes.
Oh, no, absolutely, I, I don't think, I don't think we've ever responded, no.
Never said that.
Nope.
Well, you guys are great, I got, I got no complaints about that.
So, in my
My issue is with accessibility and the rules that are written on the town website that say if they don't have a person to man the gate, the gate's closed. That's what it says.
I, I can tell you that that's not, that's out of my purview, that part of it.
Yep.
Um, when Frank calls, as any other resident, you know, we, we go, and we do what we need to do. Um, you know, I apologize for not knowing about this weekend, um, but he said Sergeant Nelson responded?
Yep.
And so, I'm, I have full confidence that we'll, we'll be handling that.
Works for me.
Okay.
Um. Good. May I? So, so I would just ask, since Laura's on, um, meeting, obviously, the, uh, wreck commission oversees the property so I would ask Laura to bring this to the attention of the wreck commission, and have them review their rules and regulations, review their policies and make sure that what the policies are, is what the practice we're following, and if not, then they should have a meeting to discuss that and revise their policies accordingly, but.
I spoke to the wreck commission, um, and I brought some of these concerns up, and I was basically told, you know I won't bring up a name, you know, I was a problem kid, we're trying to leave the facility open for access, and I get that, I was a trouble-making kid too, before I squared myself away, right? But, you know, to me, that doesn't, you know, that doesn't equate with the, with what the rules are on the website that talk about securing that facility, and if they're waiting until the town employees leave, which they do and then they pile in there, I have a problem with that, especially if it, it's, it's, you know a few weeks ago, I made another call to the police station, I pulled into the driveway, there, there were people coming out of between my neighbor's house and my house and when I asked them what they were doing, they basically, you know, I won't say it here and I called the police department, by the time they got there, it's not their fault or anything, they had, they had left, okay? Um, they were messing with the gate, they, you know, these, this was the same group of people, cuz we were there, that were in the facility that caused the damage on the gate, we heard it that night. So, you know, I mean, you know, it is what it is, you know, I'm just, you know, I'm, I could care less about people in the park if you're supposed to be in there, I could care less if you're in there at eleven o'clock at night, it's a park. But, I do have a problem with it when I'm starting to incur, you know, we had, they had a system going that seemed to be effective and now that system has, has changed again, and now I'm starting to get people back on my property again, and, you know we've, we've had enough of it.
Right, so I would ask that the wreck commission review that system, um, and, and speak to the police department about the calls, and see if they if their regulations and policies are working, or need to be updated. Um, obviously, the police respond, um, and I would continue to encourage you to call when it's happening, um, so that they can respond accordingly
Sure.
um, and we can try and stay on top of this.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. Alright, um, I think that there's no actual vote or anything involved in this, um, it seems like, uh the wreck commission has a bit of, uh, work to do in review of their policies. Um, and I'm quite sure you'll stay on top of that. Um, okay, uh, moving on, um, Honey Pot Hill, uh, fall traffic, uh
Excuse me.
Discussion. And thank you for your comments, Mr. Bemis.
Yep. Thank you. Excuse me.
Again, it, um, uh, moving on for public comment aloud, um and I know, uh, from the correspondence that we received, that, uh, the owners, um Honey Pot have been working with the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, uh, it's a mouthful. Um, so, I think what I'd like to do is, let's have a comment from, uh, Honey Pot first, as we did with the last, uh, individuals and then, uh, we'll go into the departments, and the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee.
Do we stand, do we sit?
It's entirely up to you.
You can, you can sit, okay.
You can sit, you can, whatever makes you comfortable.
I am just generally uncomfortable, so I'll sit, I guess.
Hello, Walt, thank you for allowing us to meet with you tonight. I'm Andrew Martin, and this is my daughter, Chelsea Martin. Together with a lot of great employees, we operate Honey Pot Orchards. Just stop for a second, we also brought props along.
We brought so many props.
Not yet, did you bring donuts?
Next week, next week?
That's what we all say, that's what I know.
Next week? Yeah.
And
You call it a bribe, I call it yummy.
Okay, Brett.
Other way.
Whoops, that way.
These are new signs, bro.
And then we'll, we, we'll reference this in the further into our talk, okay? So, that's our stuff we brought along, uh, we have more, but we didn't think it'd fit in this room, so that's what we brought.
Correct.
Um, I'd like to brief you on the history of our family farm. Honey Pot has been farmed by ninety-eight, for ninety-eight years by our family. I myself personally have farmed for over fifty years. Chelsea is a fourth-generation farmer in our family. We farm close to a hundred acres with mostly apples, some peaches, pears, and blueberries, and other assorted fruits. Fifty-five years ago, we began our UPIC operation with a one-acre parking lot, since then, our operation has grown. Currently, we reserve twenty-two acres of parking for key weekends in late September and early October, and this is where we are today. The busiest season for our orchard lasts about eight weeks, the second week of September to the third week of October. I think you do, can math this like six weeks, but reality is, on that, of those eight weeks, there's really only three weeks that are really busy that people really come, last weekend in September, the first two weekends, two weekends of October. Uh, during this time, traffic in the area is elevated, and weekends as cars enter and leave our parking lots. As our UPIC operation has grown, we've made considerable efforts to mitigate traffic concerns. We've improved our infrastructure by expanding our parking capacity, improving our roads, and providing additional signage. We've also worked with the town, in twenty thirteen, we adopted a traffic plan laid out by the Stowe Police Department to facilitate traffic flow. This plan has worked well for the past decade under normal circumstances. So you may recall, this last weekend, this last fall, we had especially rainy weekends. This abnormal weather resulted in two unusually busy days last year, October first and October eighth. On these days, between approximately one and four, the volume of cars exiting on Iglesiasdale road from Subri Road was backed up into our parking lots. With few cars able to exit, people were stuck in, waiting in our lots for between one and a half and two hours. This limited the cars that come into our parking lots. This limited the cars that come into our parking lots, resulting in gridlock and access to our entrance on Boone Road and Whitman Street. Just to give you a little visual.
Oh, I'll do the board, yeah.
Which I didn't bring along this one, but I can do it myself. If you can envision, we have three roads that come into our parking lots, we have Sudbury Road from Sudbury, Whitman Street from the toward Stowe, and Boone Road from toward the golf courses. So, that's a funnel. You got three roads coming in, and we got one road going out, Sudbury Road going south. And the problem is, and we're, and we've always been told, you need to get the cars off the streets, which we've worked really hard to do over the years, and it's really worked well with this plan over eleven years ago or so. But, when all of a sudden, when we get all these cars parked, we've come to find out that they can't leave, and it makes sense, that, again, that funnels, you know, and it actually, you know, backed up and ran over the top. And so, to the point, the cars were backed up through the parking lots, and cars couldn't actually get into our parking lots because of the fact that.
They're backed up all the way through?
All the way through the parking lot, believe it or not, and it's just wild.
It was wild. It was wild.
So.
Truly wild.
Uh, traffic issues like this are concerns from, uh, from a business perspective, as they negatively impact the customer experience. And for our neighbors, as it limits our neighbors' access to roads in front of their houses. And so, as we did when previously facing traffic challenges, we drafted a heavy use traffic plan in case of similar weekends in the future.
Okay, so, got this big old map. Um, so in February, we went to the Traffic Advisory, it's really, really a mouthful, Traffic Advisory Safety Board. Commission, thank you, um, and we presented a plan. So, my dad and I actually came up with this plan separately, we were both like, this is a great idea, and then we went to the other one, we were like, we have a great idea. Yeah, it's fun, um, okay, um, so yeah, we have the three roads coming in here, and we have four main parking lots that we use during the season. Uh, the biggest problem with last year is that we had five weekends of rain in a row. So, all of our business was consolidated into two days. So, our traffic plan from thirteen years ago has worked phenomenally. We have not had this problem, it was just exacerbated by the horrible weather last year. Um, we haven't had a year like that, where we had five weekends in a rain. I've only been there ten years, he's been there many, many years, forty-ish, um, fifty, and it, it was just a really bad weather year, you know? It, it happens. And what happened was, Sudbury Road, one way intersects with sixty-two. So, even if the cars can get out onto Sudbury Road, sixty-two, you got cars coming both directions, people are eking out every once in a while, you know, you're not getting the cars out of the parking lots. And the cars backed up all the way through our parking lot, onto the entrance road, and then in every direction. So, literally, no one was moving through the parking lots, no one was moving through the roads, and we thought it was an entrance problem. We thought, oh, oh no, this plan we've had that's worked so well is in trouble. But, the plan is good, the problem is, between one and four P M, when we have all of these cars exiting, it's really just the end of the day, we have all these cars exiting, if we can't get them out, we can't get anybody in. We had parking spots, sitting empty, that we couldn't fill, cause no one could get into our parking lots. Um, and we don't want to change the traffic plan as a whole, because we think, you know, ten years, pretty good run, it's worked. Um, we wanna submit this as an emergency plan. You know, if we get five weekends of rain, we now know what that means for us, it means we are in serious, deep trouble. It means that we're gonna have a day that is probably close to chaos, I cried. It was a lot, and we want to be able to service our neighbors. We brought Lisa Hubbard, who's great, she lives down the street, um, we had a meeting.
Sticky note.
Yep, she was a sticky note right there. We had a meeting with our neighbors to explain to them what we wanted to do, um, they gave us good feedback. Uh, we went house to house to explain to everyone else what we wanted to do, to make sure that, you know, everyone's not so excited about the plan, but they are on board to try it. And what we wanna do is, we wanna be able to try it before we go and hire somebody to evaluate our whole traffic plan. Cause we think that we may never need this again, once in thirteen years is pretty good, but on the off chance that we do, we need to have a plan for getting people out of our parking lots, cause no one was happy. The neighbors were pissed, we were pissed.
Uh, Mr. Chair, when, when are you gonna allow for questions? I'm, I, I, I'll write them all down, I'll wait till the end.
I'll talk to the goats come home, so you should stop me.
Um, okay, so, we, we've got the gist of what you're looking for.
Yes.
Um, is this a question specifically for?
My question is, is about the gist of what we're looking for, so I, can you explain to me exactly what you are proposing?
Excellent question.
Because I see one thing, and.
I can actually hold it for you.
You got it?
Yes, you can.
Now, now, what do I do?
Um.
Just stand there and point.
Just press it on the page. No, you can stand up, you're good.
Right here.
Yep.
So, from the exits.
So, currently, what is happening?
So, our parking lots come out onto Sudbury Road right here, all three of them exit right here.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay.
So, our plan is to take this road, Sudbury Road two sixty-two,
Uh-huh.
and make it two lanes of exiting traffic from the hours of one to four P M.
Okay.
If we get many weekends of rain in a row, so like.
For those, for those.
So, hang on, I wanna say, I, my, my bigger question, so that's, that's a plan.
Yes.
Can you explain to me why having a detail officer, like, if you hire someone to actually be doing that, could that?
I, I'll, I'll get into that.
Oh, you'll get into that, thank you, sorry, I run, I run a small business, we do a huge festival.
Bless.
I, we have to shut roads down, like, I'm very aware of all of this, and so, I just wanna make sure I understand that we haven't gone to like, DEFCON's, like, scenario before, before we kind of like, deal with what we have, so, that, those are, those are my couple of questions, yeah.
It's like a little DEFCON.
I can just. Just interject for a second, currently, it's one way.
Yeah.
Except the, the only difference, and currently, at the end of the street, it's residents only, the street is closed except for residents.
Okay.
And this would change it.
And that's during that time.
Yes.
So that it would.
It's a whole day.
All day, every weekend.
Okay.
This would change it, if we were to adopt, adopt this, adopt this plan, it would be two lanes going out.
Okay.
And, so it would be truly one way, nobody could come in.
Okay.
Um, and it would allow us to actually exit twice as many cars in the same amount of time, because we two lanes going down. The right lane would go back towards Stowe, the left lane would go towards Hudson.
So, and, and part of what we talked to our neighbors about was accessibility to their homes, the reason we wanna do this, besides wanting our customers to be able to get out, is that our neighbors couldn't get back to their houses last year, and there was a lot of swearing at police officers, was not their fault at all, they were just mad, like, they, and the whole point of this is like, they can't get through this way, but at least if we keep the traffic moving, they can go around and get back to their houses, and people were amenable to trying that plan because nobody wants to do that again.
Okay.
Um, Courtney, do you have a question?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, so my question is, if you have two lanes of traffic going out to Route sixty-two, is there anybody there to, to mitigate the effects of that?
Heck yeah. We're planning on having a detail officer at the intersection of Sudbury Road and sixty-two. The plan is to have, um, this parking lot exit onto one lane, and this parking lot exit onto the other lane, so smooth traffic coming out. Um, we would either have a barricade or another detail officer in case we had an emergency, where you would be able to shut traffic and dump it out onto sixty-two, so that emergency vehicles could come either direction. Um, and it's basically what we do on Whitman Street right now, because traffic does back up, if we get an emergency, they call down to the four-way stop, they dump traffic wherever they need to dump traffic. I understand that this plan is not perfect, but we think it's pretty good, and we have measured the street for how many cars can fit, and how long it would take, we've talked to all of the residents on all of the side streets, we made these ridiculous one-way signs. I also made a database of all neighbors that would be affected, we will be texting and emailing them to let them know that this plan is in effect either a day or several days beforehand, as soon as we are aware. So, we would be communicating, I'm doing that anyway, because there's just like a lot going on, so people should know. But, we're gonna put these signs up, made a lot of signs, one-way, do not enter, um, Joanne Drive, and, uh, Forest Ave, want road closed signs anyway, cause people have a tendency to go down there, so.
Mm-hmm.
We're just gonna make more, we have our own sign maker. So, um, yeah, like, like I said, hopefully, we never really need to do this, hopefully, going forward, we get multiple weekends, we can do our business, things don't go DEFCON one, but, I don't really, thank you, Linda.
History repeats itself.
Yeah, at some point.
Maybe not this year, maybe not next year, but three years from now, we don't know when, they, that, we might have some sort of backup plan that we could work towards, and, and maybe handle the situation better than this year, because this year, past year, it was not great.
Um, I have someone in the background.
I think you should have the police.
I'm Clifford Martin, also related, um, actually, we have three great, uh, three grandchildren of Clifford Martin, who, uh, started the farm, uh, ninety years ago. But, I work on the farm and just volunteer, but if you just think about it, the, um, our parking lots contain twenty-seven hundred cars. If, the number of people that come in is equivalent to even more than the population of Stowe at one time at the farm, and that, uh, turns over during the day, so sometimes you have almost twice the population of the people in Stowe.
We really hope that doesn't happen.
So, there's a, you can see the volume of people coming and going.
So what?
Uh, and we're, we're concerned, we talked about some things with the police department and with the committee, we're very concerned about the pedestrians walking around, because there's eight thousand people there at one point, some crossing roads back and forth. So, there are only certain traffic patterns that we can consider.
Yeah.
And, and again, it's a lot, a lot of cars, but it was probably about three thousand cars or more that, those particular weekends, that were involved with all the car, uh, streets around here.
Our roads also collapsed last year because of all the rain, so it was a compounded issue. We fixed that, but we still have stuff, so.
Okay. Chief, uh, I'm, I'm sure the fire chief wants to make some comments as well.
I'll, I'll start, so people don't have to turn around, I'll. What's that? Oh, no, no. Uh, first, I, I wanna say that, uh, Chelsea and Andrew have been doing an amazing job communicating with us, okay? This is not a, um, us against them kinda thing, we've been working, we've been working.
I don't, I didn't think it was at the cereal.
Uh, we've been working for a very long time, like, interested over the past ten so years, even more, and then we wanted to reevaluate as we go. I think when we asked you guys over the years to approve the traffic mitigation plan, I said, I think it was the last time I said, this is, uh, an ever-evolving document that we always have to make improvements on. Um, the plan that they brought forward to the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, I think I said that right, right, the whole?
Yeah.
Um, and the fire chief can, can back me up on this. Uh, we're charged, the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee is to make recommendations, so that's the life board when it comes to traffic issues. We, as the board, as the committee, voted not to bring it forward to this, to this recommendation that they had. I talked to Andrew, and I said, the avenue that to appeal our decision is to come to you. He, they are following the exact process that we asked them to, so that is what, that's one of the reasons why we are here. Um, we have looked at thi- this plan, and I totally understand the plan, and I get it. You double, double the amount of cars out of the parking lot, and I gotta tell you, Honey Pot has done an amazing job at doing internal, uh, um, str- uh, internal logistics, they've widened their parking roads, they have done everything that we've asked them to do. But for this one, this is the one where I have concerns, and I have relayed those concerns. The fact is, the road is, is an eighteen foot wide roadway. To double the amount of cars that are going, uh, out of it, uh, to do it safely, at a moment's notice, um, I can't do. I can't dedicate the roadway, I, I'm sorry.
Okay, you're saying at a moment's notice?
Uh, and I'm gonna get to the, to the, the second half of my talk. I'm saying at a moment's notice, if you call the Stowe Police Department and said, I wanna shut this road down, and I wanna make it double lane one way, I cannot do that, I don't have the personnel to do that, um, and I, and I'm not gonna be able to dedicate officers that are responsible for protecting the rest of the town, to dedicate, which we did last year. Um, not only did the on-duty shifts come, uh, were on scene, I came in on the weekend to, to help with traffic, and we cannot dedicate those officers where other people may need help. So, at a moment's notice, even to call someone in, even in an emergency, it takes an hour or so for officers to respond in from home. So, at, at a moment's notice, no. We talked about it further at the, uh, Traffic Safety Advisory Committee, with the proper planning, and, um, there, it is a possibility. That proper planning would have to go through the fire department because of the mutual responses, because other towns do come in. The proper planning would have to be, have the right amount of traffic officers on scene. My recommendation is to have four, because those signs, while they're beautiful signs, it, it, there's no legal, uh, regulation for those signs. They don't follow in with any of the actual, uh, Massachusetts general laws on, on the signage for one way. Um, and to ensure proper, to ensure proper, uh, to make sure everyone's safe, they would have to be like Chelsea said, it has to be at the entrance to, eh, B and C, it also has to have an, uh, an officer down at the Gleasondale, Sudbury, but then you'd also have to have somebody on the blind corner by Robin Wood and, uh, Jillian, and then someone off of Forest, because while they went out and they did exactly what we asked them to do, is to get a, a survey of the whole community area, um, I know that not a hundred percent of the individuals in that community are supportive of this. So, I know that the fact that, um, people may go against that sign or signs, I can't ensure the safety of individuals going the wrong way. Police officer tells them they have to go that way, and they don't, then the, that person who disobeyed that officer will be culpable of that. So, that's the difference, but it has to be pre-planned. We, we have the ability to do it if we know ahead of time, like, days ahead of time, with the option of having, um, Honey Pot being able, as we do now, to cancel those officers as well too, if the weather's gonna be.
How much time, te- I'm trying to shorten this a little bit.
Yeah.
Timeframe-wise, how many days in advance do you need to know? And then, if it looks like, oh geez, we don't need all of this, how much notice do you need for cancellation at the other end?
So, one week ahead of time to plan, to get everybody situated. Up to two hours before the detail starts, they can cancel, no charge. So, if you did one to four, eleven o'clock that morning.
Okay, so if at eleven A M, you folks found, we don't need this plan, and things are going smoothly, somebody's gotta make the phone call.
It's me.
Which we've done, which we've done before.
We have, we have done that before.
Other thing, the other thing we did, we did ask them, and Chelsea relayed this, was, we did ask them to, to hire a traffic engineer. And it was not only for the traffic around the farm, but it was actually in the farm too, to get somebody, cause we've exhausted, and we told them, we've exhausted, like, the, the Traffic Safety Committee is made up of the fire department, police department, the highway department, and the town planner.
Right.
We're at the end of our knowledge base, we need somebody smarter than us to come in and say, hey, listen, this is working, this won't work, this will work. That's what we asked them to do, we do it for every other business that comes into town, we do it for, uh, we've done it for, uh, every other development that has come into town, they have to provide, just like, uh, to the zoning board of appeals, they have to, uh, do their traffic studies as well too. So, this is not something that we felt was unreasonable, to make a more informed decision. And maybe they would come back and say, you can do it with two officers, but I don't feel that comfortable saying just two officers, one at the exit point, one at the entrance of the, exit of the road.
Okay.
I don't know if the fire chief wants to add some more.
Um, as the chief has alluded to, it's, it's public safety, and that's what I've been looking at, is the public safety. If you take the town of Stowe, and one seventeen is the center line, um, we have a set number of towns that respond to the north side, and then a different set that respond to the south side. If we turn Sudbury Road into one way, I lose that south side. There is no way that they can get up here in a timely fashion. We lose Patriot, uh, ambulance out of Hudson, we lose the Hudson Tower, we lose the Hudson engine, Marlboro engine, Berlin, because as simple, they can't get around that way. All the traffic that responds down to Robin Wood, Sudbury Road, uh, Joanne, Forest Ave, would have to come down Whitman Street to get to that area. It's gonna take a while, you know, their idea of a very short time to clear the traffic on the road, I have a concern with that. Um, so it's getting emergency vehicles in there. And if there is an emergency down in that area, how do we get the vehicles out? Uh, we're gonna have officers at all the intersections to stop the traffic completely. Um, so that's, that's concerns that we have on the public safety side of it. You know, I understand they have a business to run, they're trying to do it as much as possible, but as we said, you know, to have an engineer look at the ins and outs of the Honey Pot Orchard, it's grown over the last fifteen, twenty years. Um, and it's something that we desperately need to be looked at, for them to operate a business professionally, we get people in and out safely.
Go ahead.
I, I, I beg to differ, as Chelsea pointed out, if there's an officer at the end of the street on sixty-two, then there's an emergency. And the amount of time it takes for, either even for our own police, I mean, fire department to respond, or ambulance, the time to get down there, they could readily drop it, dump all the. they could readily drop it, dump all the traffic out on sixty-two from Sudbury Road. We'd have the traffic stopped at our, uh, parking lots, and that road would be cleared within two minutes. And I guarantee you, they can't get there in two minutes from the fire department, so.
Also, we.
I don't see that as an issue, and the same for anybody that's coming in from out of town. The same thing, we could dump that road, ho- hold everybody in the parking lots.
Can somebody clarify one thing for me?
Sure.
About dumping the traffic. How many physical vehicles are we actually talking about on that section of road?
Two hundred.
Two hundred.
You're talking two hundred vehicles on two lanes, so a hundred per lane, is that correct?
Yes, and each lane would be going in a different direction.
Okay, so if we needed to dump the traffic in the case of an emergency, and you alluded to the fact that that's done on Whitman, I think you said?
I said, yeah, Whitman Street.
On Whitman Street.
They allow Whitman to back up to Birch Hill before they close it, Birch Hill Road.
So what happens is, um, there are certain choke points, there's two, there's two plans in place. One of the plans is if there's an emergency on the south end of town, over the bridge towards the lake area, dispatch notifies the detail officer in the intersection. They don't allow any more cars to come up Sudbury Road, and they take, uh, they take Whitman Street and send Whitman Street down Sudbury Road and up. So they clear out Whitman Street as quick as they can, so Whitman Street can open up. Whitman Street has a lot of tight turns, it is, uh, especially down by the blueberry patch there. It's, um, can't get a fire truck through, uh, I mean, it's very tight. So, that's one of the plans. The other plan is, if, if there's so much traffic and Birch Hill is, it's backed up all the way to Whitman to Birch Hill, then it, we put up, you know, entrance signs, and a cruiser sits at the entrance from Gleesondale, um, at Whitman Street. And no cars can come up, uh, Whitman Street till that clears out a little bit. Typically, it's, it only happens once in a great while, and then we only usually, it's probably like six to eight minutes that that, to clear that out.
Okay, so six to eight minutes at Whitman.
But that's not in an emergency, that's just normal.
No, I, I understand, but in the case, if there was an emergency, with that plan in place now, would you comfortably feel that you could clear that Whitman? I'm trying to understand it in relation to Sudbury.
Right, so if Sudbury, we had two hundred cars in, a hundred in each lane, and we had to clear it out, and there was, uh, and we stopped traffic, which would stop on the north and southbound, um, you know. Could it be done in under five minutes? I don't know.
Cutting it, you're cutting it very, very close. This is not a two-minute clear. That is not a two-minute clear.
Yeah, very close. Yeah, it's not. Because, yeah, and I'm, uh, yeah.
You, you're expecting people to be doing this immediately. That is not gonna happen when you're in an emergent situation and you're trying to get people out.
Which I understand on Sudbury Road, and also, we already have this plan in place on Whitman. So I'm trying to, I'm trying to understand it from that.
Well, even when we also have two, you, you have half the amount of cars, and you have two locations that we're sending them to, coming off of Whitman. You send them up Boone, and you send them continuing down Sudbury Road, um, to the, to Lot A entrance.
We're sending them both ways on sixty-two.
There's actually, the distance from the intersection in front of the farm, Whitman Street, Boone, and Sudbury Road, to Birch Hill is actually substantially further than the distance from our parking lots to the end of Sudbury Road.
It's two thousand versus fifteen hundred feet.
That's substantial. Correct. And, but again.
You're not shutting down both lanes though.
I'm not shutting down, yeah, I'm not shutting down both lanes.
And you're putting more significant car on, you're putting extra power.
Like, the, the fi- the fire, the fire trucks and ambulances can go around, can go around the cars that are on Whitman Street.
Sure, cuz it's huge.
Like, if it's backed up all the way to Birch Hill, they can go around all the way down Whitman Street.
Useless, they couldn't.
It's tied down a lot of movement.
So.
It's tied down, but we're reaching it down there.
I have a question. So if we're talking about potential here, if we have a cop at every road, could we stop traffic at Bert, what's the road? Help me, the one way with the four houses?
It's Forest, Joanne, Robinwood.
Robinwood. Could we stop the traffic there and dump from Robinwood down, or dump from Forest down, or dump from Joanne down? So like wherever we have the emergency, you're dumping half or less the cars.
That would be the plan. We, again, it has to be pre-planned.
Yeah, cuz we have access to Forest with dumping maybe ten cars, cuz Forest Road is right there. It's maybe ten cars, and you have access to Forest and Joanne off of Forest Drive. The only issue would be potentially, I still can't remember the name of the road.
Robinwood.
Thank you, Robinwood, which.
It's, it's the pre-planning.
Sure, I totally understand.
If you called me up and said, like, I need four cops down here, we, we gotta do it. There's no way I can do it.
I would never do that to you.
I could, I could.
After this year, if we get five weekends of rain, boy, I know it's coming. We can plan a week in advance, we can know, I mean, maybe not a week, maybe a week. We could say a week ahead of time, we know it's coming, cuz it's probably not gonna be good.
Well, okay, the, the caveat, mm, your, your escape to that though is if you give a week plan, which it sounds like
Well, it would've ran the previous three weekends.
Yes, understand completely, yes.
That they're saying a week, they would need for notice, but on the back end of it, you only give them two weeks' notice to cancel it and say.
Two hours.
Two hours.
Two hours.
I'm sorry, two hours.
We're doing great.
Uh, two hours to cancel it without being charged for the plan to be implemented. So, it sounds like there's something that could be a workable plan, at least to try.
Yes.
I, I, I just have one comment. I, in my entire life, I've never seen a police officer at a one-way street, and there's plenty of, not in Stowe, there's not many one-way streets, but around the state, there's a lot of one-way streets, and there's no police officers at those streets.
But, but that's not a, that's not a real one-way street.
And, and our. Well, we can make a real one, if you want, that's a one-way.
But it's.
No, you have to go, you'd have to go through the state.
But it's, it's not about, it's not about the one-way, it's about the fact that it's, it's, it's a temporary change in traffic pattern
Yeah.
that nobody's used to. It's not a one-way all the time.
That's why we're gonna do text them and email them, so they're, have it in their head, oh, that's gonna be the way it is.
So what. So, well, what about the people?
These people are smart.
Hey, hey.
So.
It's okay.
It's okay.
We're working through this, and I think we're coming to some sort of a viable.
May I say one thing?
Yeah.
I appreciate that you're pre, that you're thinking about this, right? Like, this is, this is a huge, like, I get that you guys had all of that, and I think that this is fantastic, that you are not throwing it at the last minute. So I do wanna say, I appreciate that you're bringing it here and doing this, and that we're having a, a conversation, but, um, and now I've interrupted, but I did just one second.
That's, I'm sorry, and I didn't realize that you were raising your hand, so I apologize. My peripheral vision isn't, what are you doing? Courtney.
Well, my con- one comment is that, that you're not, that the one-way street is, it could be anybody that's expecting a two-way street coming off of Route sixty-two, who might do something unpredictable and unsafe.
Don't.
They could get there.
Yeah, yeah, no, but that's where, we're gonna put an officer there for sure, cuz that would be terrible.
Understood, understood.
That's.
I, I was going to ask a very unpopular sort of a question, which is, is there any way to control the people coming to your farm?
It is unpopular.
And I don't, I don't want to restrict in any way your success, so, uh, because I think it's our success here in town, when a business does well, so.
No, but they asked the same question.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just curious if you, uh, eh, what the, i- if you could briefly recap the conversation about, I don't know what, advanced ticketing, or some way to, um, to deflect, and I understand that when you're dealing with, you know, five weekends of rain, and then you only have a limited time to, to sell your, your fresh product before it, and, and you have weather, um, so.
Yeah. Yeah, happy to, um, it's a very reasonable question. Uh, we did ticketing during COVID, cuz we had to. Um, I, we didn't have a great time doing it. Um, I would hope to never do it again, but that's personal. The reason that it didn't work for us specifically was partially the weather. You get rained out, you refund X amount of tickets, you choose not to refund X amount of tickets, either way, I get sworn out. So it's, um, it's a choice. Uh, we do have trouble, we would have to input new infrastructure, which we could do, very expensive. Um, part of the issue during COVID was people were upset we weren't checking them in, which would either take some sort of scanner or something, we don't really have internet in the middle of the field, we're trying to figure that out still. Um, there's a lot of minutia that goes into it that, um, we've talked about it on those crazy busy days, we're like, do we just get people to like RSVP? So we have an idea of how many people are coming, like, we're trying to incentivize people to come earlier in the day, trying to get them to come when it rains by offering discounts, offering different incentives to people, and we found that that has been more effective, but there really is only so much you can do, cuz people in New England do not come apple picking when it rains. Um, and last year, we would have been really up a creek with those five weekends of rain, because as much as those two busy days took pieces of my soul, we really needed them, cuz we do have thirty-five thousand apple trees, and we sell mostly, you know, retail to the public, so it's, um, not, it's such a viable question. I think about this all the time, I would love to figure out a way to make it work for us. Um, I think if anyone here can control the weather, I am open to signing a deal.
Pe- people were will- more willing to accept that whole idea during COVID.
During COVID, yeah.
They're not so into that now, I think we get a lot of pushback, is that a problem?
Yeah, people do just also show up, like, even during COVID, we had people showing up, and that is hard to factor for, because you can have all the best intentions with having people sign up, and then you have X amount of people on top of that, and it's, I don't know. I, I don't, you, if you've dealt with massive amounts of people, it's difficult to figure out how to make it work when you have a, and we're also trying to get people to come earlier and later in the season, eh, but it's, you're fighting people's nature in, in New England, you know? It's seventy degrees, let's go apple picking, yeah.
Come on, really nice.
Right.
So, can I ask one more question?
Sure.
This isn't thorough, entirely germane to this conversation, but I just wanted to throw it out there. Would it make any difference if there were some kind of shuttle from, like, the train station in South Acton that would come to your orchard? Would it make any difference if you had some way that people could access your orchard by a rail trail kind of a, of a, um, connection, like a bicycle connection?
Um, I think the shuttle could be very cool, um, we do have a lot of people Uber, which is shocking. Um, unfortunately, it is like just far enough away where the access is tough. Um, the rail trail, I don't think it would help as much as, I think it might cause us more problems rather than less problems, mostly because all of our property at this point, as they've said, like, our business has really expanded over the last fifteen years. Parts of our property that would be viable for that are no longer viable for that, because we have backhoes and tractors and things that would crush bicycles, so.
Can't carry, can't carry many apples on a bicycle, if you're.
That's true too.
So.
Thank you. Yeah, of course.
Yeah, please.
Yeah.
Come and drink, that's great.
Yeah, I know.
Just to make sure I understand this, what we're talking about here is a, maybe twice in a lifetime event?
Yes.
The rest of the weekends, there's no problem?
The plan has been working, uh, there's a couple adjustments we need to make, I talked to some residents. Um, one of the signs we have to look at is the resident only do on enter, that is too big, because people can't get around it, so that's one of the complaints. So we're gonna have to make that smaller.
We've got smaller?
We built a new one.
So.
It's thinner, taller.
We're gonna have to make that smaller. Again, it's an ever-living document that would keep changing and evolving, and I guess at the beginning, you have, Honey Pot's been great at doing that, um, so.
So, for this one?
But it is, but, but the plan's been working well for years now.
Yeah, any other year, that's not much.
So, yeah, it is like, it is the event, it's the event that they, that they were talking about, it's like this.
Right.
Everything comes together in the worst possible way for many weekends, and then comes back together at the very possible, best possible way for them.
Which last year you didn't know about, cuz you hadn't experienced it before, but this year, if you start seeing three, four weekends of rain.
Yes.
You could plan ahead with the.
Yes, one of the.
Reality is.
Public safety, and take care of this.
Yes, and one of the disagreements that we've had going back and forth, cuz you can tell, you know, that's, it's healthy discussion.
Yep.
Is how many, what is, how many officers? You know, Chelsea said two, I say four, fire chief.
Compromise at three.
One.
Says one, fire chief, fire chief has concerns too, you know, so we just want everything addressed, and that's why we bring it to you. These are our recommendations, that's their recommendations.
Well, that's one of my other concerns, having a, a detail officer at Sudbury Road and sixty-two, an emergency happens, the detail officer stops traffic on sixty-two to dump Sudbury Road, but it could be a response from Hudson, who's now can't get up sixty-two.
Right, so, but once again, if they just snap their fingers and say, we have to do it now, we're not gonna be ready.
It's not gonna happen, right?
It's not gonna happen.
Also.
Whereas if it says, okay, this weekend, we're anticipating that we're gonna have an overflow, we'll go into this mode here, then we just change our run cards.
Okay.
We know that ahead of time, we know that our response is gonna be this way, we know who's gonna be responding, but to do it instantly.
So if you get four weekends of rain, you'll know ahead of time.
But we also have the problem, like you said, coming south on sixty-two.
Yeah.
Now we stop north and south on sixty-two.
Oh, I've been in that traffic before.
So Sudbury Road now is free. But Sudbury, Gleeson, I'm sorry, Gleeson Dale at Sudbury going south is now back to Randall. So where do the fire trucks go then?
Right.
If I could just interject, Chelsea went off script just a little bit.
I did.
And one of the things was in, that was in the script, would, if this plan was approved, it, I would head in there a maximum of three days this year, and a maximum of four hours each day, or probably more like three hours each day. And it doesn't necessarily take four bad weekends. If, if, on the three key weekends, I talked about the first, last weekend of September, first two weekends of October, the key weekends.
Yeah.
And if you lose a Saturday completely, like we had one that time last year before one of these days, it just rained. I mean, I left the farm, it was raining so much, and.
We never leave.
And then Sunday, I never leave, and then Sunday was a beautiful day, and that's when it happens. I mean, the odds of that happening again this year, pretty slim, but, you know, we're just trying to work something out that could be better than what we had last year, because it just was not good last year.
We say.
To know ahead of time, to be able to inform public safety, let's get prepared this coming weekend, we're gonna need this plan in place.
You at least have a feeling, like, oh, like, there's been X amount of weekends of rain, and usually too, it's like a Saturday it rains, and then a Sunday is beautiful, like he said, that Sunday is chaos. So, you know, we wanna set expectations right, like a maximum of three days per year. We used it too on the worst year we've ever seen. So like, odds are good that this will not be a regular event, based on our last ten years of experience, but we also don't wanna say, you know, never, and then not have an option.
Right. When you say three, Phil, what do you, I, I don't understand that, a maximum.
Oh, we're saying like a maximum of three days a year, we would use this plan if everything went to heck in a handbasket. Last year, we could've used it two days, and that was the worst we've ever seen.
Why wouldn't we wanna limit ourselves?
Cuz I'm just telling you that that is my unfeeling.
Okay.
Of all my experience, that that, it wouldn't be beyond that, because of those, the three weekends I've explained to you, that's when we get the crush. If earlier than that, later than that, if you lose a day, a Saturday.
Yeah, it doesn't matter.
The next day, it's gonna be busier, but it's still manageable, okay?
So from the sounds of it, you do have a plan in place, you can work it out with enough advance notice so that you know it's coming, and make contingency plans. The biggest issue is how many detail officers that.
And also, we, we have to make sure that, we're also keeping the residents who live there in mind too, because they still need to be able to access their homes. So it would be, yes, we could dump out the roads, but then, okay, if we have somebody at Forest, we could shut down Forest for a few minutes, and then somebody could come up Sudbury Road too, you know, cuz we'd be looking at, okay, I live right there, why do I have to go all the way around? Because we've heard that, we've heard the fact, I don't wanna drive all the way around, can't drive all the way around, if there's a sign, there's a big sign, we're gonna address. I can't make it around that sign, there's too much traffic. Why don't we look for another, I'd intend the consequences that have.
So can I? What's that? I don't know what the rules are about who can speak and when.
You have to be recognized by the chairman.
And you need to state your name, address, and all that.
I'm Lisa Hubbard, I live in forty-five Sudbury Road, under the pink sticky. And, and I was, I was actually out last year on the day that was the worst, trying to get back to my house. And I think the plan they have this way, and I, I live right between the exit and Sudbury Road, right, under the pink sticky. So, anything would've been better than what I had to do last year to get back to my house. So if I could've come up Whitman and down, even if it was a little bit clogged, to get to my house, that would've been better. I had, um, yeah, my, my son was ready to jump out of the car and start fighting with the guy who was yelling at us to get out of the, and it was, it was, yeah, it wasn't pretty. Our biggest feedback from neighbors was, they want placards, they want little pieces of paper to put in their windshields that say like, I'm a resident, I live here, let me in, and I'm gonna do that for everybody, cuz like, if this ever happens again, they'll have a thing that they can be like, cuz there was problems with that, so.
So, it's.
Hi, I'm Patricia Noon, I'm on Forest Road, I just wanna give a shout out to the Martin family and Honey Pot. Hi, I'm Patricia Noon. I'm on Forest Road. I just wanna give a shout out to the Martin family in Honey Pot Hill. They're wonderful neighbors and if there's anything that we can do, I know my family is happy to go a little bit around the block to get home on these couple of days every five years in order to support our neighbors.
I understand. I live down there as well. I could not get out of Pine Point Road for quite a while. So, I mean, I've experienced it firsthand. It's honestly sitting here listening to all of this, it sounds like there's an actual plan that seems to be just about in place.
There also sounds like there could be good use of a traffic engineer to review what's going on because this plan is a
Our own, sorry.
Go ahead.
Our only feedback there is we just wanna try this first. We've had one problem.
Well, it sounds like you're gonna have to try it anyway.
Sure, I just we just also like.
Are you saying that can we do both? Can you try this and also get a traffic safety engineer to start? Because I don't think a traffic safety engineer is gonna have an answer for you by the fall.
Oh, they sure aren't, no.
Right.
But also, uh a lot of dirt roads on our property, a lot of traffic safety engineers haven't worked with farms super closely. And we've worked with the town forever on figuring this out and we've had really good success with the town. We personally would love to keep working with the town and if this doesn't work, more than happy to discuss the engineer. But if we have a problem once every ten years, don't really wanna spend five to ten thousand dollars to have somebody tell me that this is a really good idea.
So it makes sense. So, I mean, it it makes sense, probably try it. You're saying the seven day notice.
Yeah, typically what we do is like, we we have a meeting uh usually mid 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 August-ish. And then we come up with the dates that are more like, there is a set amount of dates between what you've historically have said is your busy time, which you've made mentioned tonight many times. Um and those are the dates that we have those officers or officer. We can do the same thing and say, okay, we will have every weekend that we do this, we will have those four extra. And then that morning, you can say, nope, we're good, we'll eat them.
So in other words, if I understand you correctly, for the last weekend in September and the two weekends, first two weekends in October.
It's all it is like, what is what is it, Chelsea, four, five weekends?
Uh this year, there's gonna be three big ones, September twenty-eighth and twenty-ninth, October fourteenth.
Yeah, there's a set, there's a set week, there's a set in the traffic mitigation plan that started ten years ago.
Yep.
Certain weekends between whatever is the second weekend in September all the way through.
Yeah. It's intense.
Okay, so.
Whatever whatever those are, I don't have them on my calendar.
Okay. All right, so.
That's that's what I do.
Not not to limit.
Yeah, Cliff just.
If I understand you correctly, why limit it if it if it ends up being a good plan? Why not have it set up for this for six weekends or whatever?
Please God not send us a three year.
With the caveat that uh you have uh the two hour window to make sure that you cancel it if you don't need it. But it sounds like from your end.
For early. Yeah, please for can we like make it so that someone reaches out to me because I am half a person that type of year? I can I can try to remember. I can sure try to remember, but if we have four extra details show up, it's a lot of money.
I understand that. Well, then I I think.
I know, I'll set reminders in my phone, it'll be great.
The onus, I mean, the onus need the some of the onus does need to come down on to you guys and to yourself.
You're right.
And and you know, realistically, it sounds like.
Because you're also gonna be notifying the neighbors, right?
Yeah.
So.
See, that's why I beg to differ about for four police officers. It's just, you know, you would definitely at Gleesondale Road, and he won it, the exit point. But in between.
Andrew, I understand what you're saying.
I'm gonna I'm gonna go with the chief's recommendation.
I'm gonna go with the chief's.
Chiefs of the.
And we I closed we closed Screw Street in Acton and I had to have four D I had to pay for four detail officers and that is like a short.
It's two chiefs. Because they're.
So I I would go, yeah.
Yeah, so.
We have a discussion that just amongst before decisions made on the actual number.
I I I I reduced from five to four.
I I I actually requested six, so.
And I believe that the
Safety.
There's actually uh by Robert Jones' house, there's that corner there that's also a concern. But I believe we can safely manage that because there's one at Robinwood and Jillian and the exit point. We can safely manage that, although I would like to see another one there, but I didn't do it in the past.
Okay, so.
So I know, I'm wait. Mr. Chair, point of order, are we being asked to vote on and make a decision on this?
Especially because this is the first year.
So are we voting a ruling?
It's not, it's fine.
That's a possibility.
We'll reevaluate it next year and see how it goes.
So can I suggest, I'm sorry?
Okay, um first of all, let's bring order back uh to the room to the discussion. So uh a question was asked point of order if we, the board, are being asked to uh make a motion and second and approve and I'm saying, yes, I would like to see this moved forward. Now.
Love for you to write that motion down.
Sure.
Courtney.
So but before the motion is and I'm gonna close discussion at this point. Um I think we've heard.
Can I just, can you just make sure there's no one online that wants to speak? There's a few people, I don't know, it just if anyone can raise their hand.
You're right, and I I do apologize for anyone. Is there anyone online uh pertinent to discussion?
So no one's raising their hand, thank you.
Okay, so then I'm going to close discussion from the public.
Wait, hold on. Could I add, if we is is it open for public comment right now?
It it was, it just closed.
I just had a question, uh how wide is Sudbury Road and could three cars be so long?
No.
I love that for us.
Power of the president.
It's a great question. So I I yeah, so um.
I'm working on it.
Okay, so the parameters of what need to be in the motion is that um Honey Pot will um work with the uh traffic advisory safety committee uh representatives setting up um six weekends.
Work, please.
For the possibility of uh needing to move this forward. They Honey Pot will need to give a minimum of seven days notice.
Deal.
Which we'll we'll take care of it that first.
Right.
I just have a really quick question. If we're setting up every weekend, do we need to give notice? What's happening?
That's what I'm saying. We we could, we can work that out.
Yes.
Okay.
When we when we do the detail for the sub for the four-way, we'll set it follow-up. And then every weekend you can cancel. So if the plan will be in place, you can cancel.
All right, so that's why I'm saying a minimum of seven days um in the motion.
All right, so a minimum of seven seven days to um set this plan in.
The traffic plan, the amended traffic plan.
Yes, good stupid question. Why do we need a motion for this? They're doing it already.
They're not.
No, they're not.
They are not doing this right now.
We're we're on appeal right now.
They're appealing.
They're appealing to us.
Never mind. Like I said, it was a stupid question.
No, never stupid.
The only stupid question is the one that's never asked. The um and it is on Honey Pot. Let me know when you're ready.
Um, I'm gonna give this to you to read in a second.
And then just the two hour prior for canceling. The minutia details you all can.
I'll put that in somewhere.
Yeah. Yes. Madam Administrator, would you like to take a look at this?
Yes. In fact, I will, I think you should say it so the board members could weigh in on it as well and then we can tweak it if needed.
I'll just say it. Yeah. All right, let me just see if I can fit this last piece in.
I forget to have her look at it and then make us all look smart, that's all.
I can if you want, but.
Do you want me to just read it out loud?
I'll I'll read it in a sec. Okay, um, Mr. Chair, I move to grant the request by Honey Pot Orchard for a seasoned trial of their proposed emergency road clearing plan devised in coordination with the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. A minimum of seven days are required to set the plan in motion for each occurrence. Uh, sorry. It may be canceled up to two hours prior. And each instance will require four traffic details.
Four details per instance. Well, it's all in there.
Sorry, kinda on the fly.
Again?
But are you happy with the content?
Yeah.
This is for the emergency plan.
This is for the emergency plan.
That's in place already.
No, this is the emergency plan.
So the emerg- the emergency road clearing plan?
So there will be a total if this was in if they were there, if they didn't cancel, there would be five.
Yes.
Officers.
Yes.
One at the intersection or.
Got it, they already have one.
Yeah, yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Right, it just four additional details per occurrence, yeah.
For additional, yeah.
I accept that, sound the amendment.
Shall I second?
Um is it worth putting in there anything if they find out that four is too many, they can work it out to.
Any other?
Well, that but that's something they can.
They can.
The point is to try it and see, you know.
They can, the point is to try it and see. Yeah.
We we, no.
I don't wanna reduce.
Right, I understand, but if you do find out that it can be reduced, I don't want this to limit you from reducing it.
You don't wanna. Yeah.
No, this will, this does.
It won't, we don't.
Okay.
So do you wanna read it one last time?
All right, I could try, sure. Uh, Mr. Chair, I once again move to grant the request by Honey Pot Orchard for a seasoned trial of their proposed emergency road clearing plan devised in coordination with the Traffic Safety Advisory Committee. A minimum of seven days are required to set the plan in motion for each occurrence. It may be canceled up to two hours prior. And each instance will require four additional details.
For a second.
Second.
For discussion?
Oh, no.
All those in favor, aye, aye, let's sure it passes unanimously.
Aye. Thanks all.
Thank you. I wanna thank every single person who participated in this discussion. And this was not an easy situation to be dealing with and I really wanna commend everybody for um their
Yes.
for being open-minded enough in setting egos or anything else aside to come up with with a plan for trial with it, I think that was.
Yeah, let us know if it is. Well, I'm sure you'll hear.
We'll hear, don't worry.
Sure, we will.
Alright.
All right, so thank you all.
Thank you. Thanks guys.
Thank you. Bow. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. You too.
Thank you, I'm James.
That's my husband, James.
James.
Nice to meet you.
Yes, how are you doing?
Nice to meet you. That's good, I'm sorry. Acton. Good job, it's all good, good job.
Thanks, your goodness.
It's all good, it's all good. You're all good. You're good.
Thank you. Okay, uh next on the agenda.
Alright. You're in transfers.
Can't you just keep the town really quiet and work pieces?
Oh, he's like, Bill, are you here for the year in transfers?
No, you're fine.
Okay, next on the agenda is meeting minutes.
Now fiscal year ended transfers.
Thanks.
So we do not have any near transfers. So your next agenda item is meeting minutes.
We don't need any, so let's go to meeting minutes here.
Um.
Mr. Chair, I move to accept the meeting minutes of the June twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second.
As written, my second.
My comments.
You, I thought they were still there as always.
They were fantastic. I was not here, I'm in abstain. I wasn't here, I'm just gonna abstain from them, but I'm just letting you know.
Okay.
All those in favor, aye, aye.
Aye.
Uh three and one abstention.
Uh, Mr. Chair, you have a bit of a situation back there, you're bleeding.
Probably.
Okay.
Okay, fantastic. Would you like a one last, would you like one last motion?
Blood, sweat and tears, literally.
Alright. Uh, Mr. Chair, oh, we have board correspondence, sorry.
Well, are we a tour? Correspondence uh as well, um thank you. Something big.
It was nice to see we heard from Comcast and Verizon again.
Yes. I know, but we have to hear from them.
So, um, is this other matter that was in the correspondence going to is there a reason to have that on a future agenda? It's all taken care of.
It's a planning board matter, they have to revise their special permit. So the uh building commissioner is working on enforcement, but they have to revise if they wanna continue to operate the way they have them.
Great.
Awesome.
Excellent, okay.
Good to know.
Uh.
And I'm glad I'm glad to hear that the the commissioner is also doing what he's doing.
I can see that clarification.
Yes.
Good.
Um, I will take a final motion.
Mr. Chair, I move to adjourn.
Second.
You gotta let her second so that we can. It's alright.
We have moved and seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Nay.
How, Courtney. Contrarian tonight.
Oh, no, that wasn't contrary at all, you have not.